And I'll call the planning and zoning commission meeting to order. First item, local Michael Kane. I'm with Tarbox.
Here.
Susan Southern. So you don't know who to shut.
Yeah.
Kevin Fifth Paul.
Yeah.
Okay. Now it's missing, so I'll point state to sit for, for hell. Yeah. We have a quorum. Next thing is.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, but I think, oh, is he gonna be the secretary?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, good, thanks.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And his handle precious. Yeah. That's right. Well, first item of business is approval of minutes. You have the minutes of April 12th, entertain a motion to.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of April 12th.
For a second. Second, does anyone have any corrections? No corrections. No one has any corrections or vote on the motion for approval of the minutes, all those in.
Oh, I have one question, one correction I would like to make. I'm sorry. I just want to add to the precious memories that, because I, this is on page four, report of staff. Just if we could just make some sort of a note that beside being, that we should be in touch with the neighbor. Who actually, which is why we are pursuing this at any level. That's steam, steam, bird. Thank you. That's all.
So I'll vote on. So you wanted to.
I just want to make sure that, that besides that we do it, that it's in the minutes so that everyone knows that we were, that our due diligence.
We'll vote on, on the motion to prove the minutes as amended, all those in favor say aye. The opposed, the abstentions, motion. I wasn't. I know. I have one extension, Steve. So that motion is carried for, for in favor of one extension. Actually, we have all the communications, does anyone on the commission have any communications? Or the staff? Does anybody in the public wish to address the commission? Do you stay your name and address for the record?
Thomas Olson, 188 Crosswoods Drive, Groton. I'm also representing the Conservation Commission. One of the things that we're looking at right now as the Conservation Commission, this is communications with, with you as a commission also. Is that the White House, about a year last January, put a goal out there of 30% protected land in the United States wide. And so we're looking at that, how do we take a look at the 21% that we currently have protected and brought in, the expanding that. So one of the things that, looking at various avenues of doing things, how do you get protection? There's obviously deeds, there can be easements. But also we're looking at potentially zoning, as, and that's what we see in some areas like in Groton. At one point, they, all their protect, protected area is zoned that way also. And, and the commission, as we went through this last iteration of regulations, did a great job of increasing that factor. But we captured about 85% of the current open space. And so we're taking a look at, are there areas that we should capture just to get the zoning in line? But also expand that into other areas such as PA 490 lands. And so we'd like to know, have, potentially have a point of contact to start just some theoretical discussions. Because we recognize that there's a lot of issues to be, before you do this. But as far as for considerations, as we're looking to have a point of contact liaison on the commission here between the two commissions. And I am the one on the Conservation Commission, so I'm reaching out to planning and zoning commission here. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to address?
Give you.
This is case, you want to understand my accent, just want to make sure you can read it.
Isn't it your bad person?
French is a different story. Good evening. My name is Arnold Bourgeois, I live at 13 Grammar Street Mystic. I represent a group of hosts and short-term rental owners located in Groton and Stonington. Together, we decided to form a 501(c)(4) association called Mystic Host Association, or MHA. Our goal is to have an official presence in the community. We are responsible, caring, and passionate short-term rental owners. MHA is a grassroots citizen group of Mystic, Groton, and Stonington, already owners who have organized due to a concern about the impact of future regulation that, we believe, will have a profound effect on mystic economy, its tourists, its tourist accommodation, and property rights of all residents. With more than 240 short-term renters in Mystic, we believe that we contribute to the charming attraction of Mystic to travelers from all over the world. The welcoming spirit and warm hospitality of Mystic's STR community cannot be understated. Tonight, I would like to express a wish to be involved with the commission and the firm that you hired, or slay with them, so we can talk about the best solution for everyone. We feel our association will have valuable input in this discussion. As a start, MHA has begun the process to create, of creating a code of conduct that will be followed by all our members. Our primary goal is to be an important and active association in the community and to respond to the concerns of our neighbors with open dialogues and collaboration at a potential solution. Additionally, we have started a Facebook page as we, as a way for the Mystic Host to communicate and support the ongoing responsible management of our properties in a unified way. And lastly, we also have created a website, which we invite you to visit at www.mystichostassociation.com for more information. The MHA has formed one week ago. In the, in the last seven days of collaboration and action, are any indication of our group's intention? The tone of mystic can be sure will be an active and involved group. As we meet and learn with one another, we have already discovered so many talented and wonderful people. We do more than make bets. Thank you for listening and we look forward to working together. Thank you.
Anyone else? Speak to us.
Mr. Kane, thank you. Mr. Pritchard. Not the whole. It's a solid. I've got two matches on the ones.
I need to. Hi there, Tyler Hespler, 29 Route 27 in Mystic, thank you for your time. We walked away from last meeting, a lot of us feeling a little bit frustrated that we weren't being heard. We were told to kind of be quick and not repetitive, and yet it didn't seem like the two things that we were trying to drive home were really being considered at the end, which was, we're responsible owners. We want to work with you to find a solution with this. You know, we were laughed at, we were mocked about our emails, and nothing we said was really regarded at that final conversation. Tonight, I'm asking you to please hear us. Now, another note, I use the term short-term rental banning and owner occupied requirement, the same, there's a lot of short-term rentals that are not owner occupied. If you make that requirement, it's essentially banning, in my opinion, in a lot of our opinions. Page one is dedicated to the gentleman from last meeting who told us that we were only in this to quote, line our pockets, and we had no regard for the town whatsoever. A lot of us found that incredibly insulting. This is a screenshot from a conversation I had with Danielle from the Make-A-Wish Foundation. She's working with the family of a critically ill little girl from Massachusetts who wants to spend a week in Mystic. We discounted her stay for her request, we would have done anyways, to be honest. I'm in the middle of June. And my wife and I are very excited to decorate the house of her and to make her trip as special as we possibly can. I met somebody else from, through Airbnb, who was very hyped at the aquarium, and I'm reaching out to her to make sure she can make this little girl's trip special as well. The things like this, and the letters I attached to the back of this packet, the handwritten letters from guests we've had, that's the reason we do this. I'm not in this to line our pockets. And I would be doing this, and I didn't love what I did, and the things like this are the reasons why I love what I do. Page two and three, please. So, no one had really asked about what we are doing with our properties to structure them, to make sure that they are, we're vetting our guests, we're being responsible. It's two and three are snapshots of Airbnb, of the privileges, and what we can utilize through Airbnb to make sure we're bringing in the proper guests into these properties. Now, we look at, we have house rules, we have an excess, do we have a fee? If there's a late checkout or excessive garbage, we have not have to use that fee yet. You know, we have a shared drive, we have parking limit, that's what we have in our booking requirements. And most importantly, on page three, is there's what's called instant book guest requirements. We can require a guest, a government issued guest ID, we require a host recommended, recommendation and no previous bad reviews. We require a pre-booking message that the guest has to read and acknowledge, so before they book with us. And you can read our pre-booking message right there. Now, that being said, there is no regulation necessary for these properties whatsoever. On page four, I pulled a couple of statistics from local articles and newspapers, and I knew Mystic was a very popular tourist destination, but some of the things I read recently shocked me. That the Mystic, Connecticut Tours Ministry is $18 billion annually. There are nearly, or over 800,000 people visit the aquarium annually. Tourism is so important to Mystic that 50% of the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce members are tourism-related business. Mystic country employs over 27,000 employees to tourism-related business, and it makes up one quarter of the tourism workforce in the state. Mystic accounts for 29% of traveler's spending, Connecticut tourism growth outpaces the nation. And lastly, my personal favorite is we have America's best baker right in our backyard, and you know people are traveling across the country to get those macaroos, right? We have to support this tourism, we have to continue supporting this tourism. I know one of the board meetings last time had mentioned they weren't sure how many of these properties there were. Page five and six shows, is a couple of screenshots from different, different listing platforms. Is anywhere between 192 and 247 short-term rentals in Mystic alone. There's over 50 in Groton alone. And that really begs the question. Is this a short-term rental problem, or is this a problem with a few short-term rentals that can and should be dealt with? It's very important to get to distinguish the difference in those two questions. I believe if this was a short-term rental problem, you'd have had this conversation a long time ago. There was a massive revision to their zone regulations in August of 2021, last year in the middle of summer, and nothing was done about Airbnbs or shorter-term rentals. Because it, it wasn't an issue back then, and I don't know why it seems to be an issue right now. And I also asked a question there, is this even a problem at all? If you turn to page seven, it's the reason I'm asking that. I'm not saying there is no issue. What I'm saying is, we as a group have not seen these complaints, we have not seen any citations, like, like was being talked about. I had a conversation with a police officer, anonymous police officer. I asked him, was there a noise ordinance in Groton? He said there was not. I would probably start with that, I think a lot of people would agree with that. And having a universal policy is much more favorable to all people, and it's, you really can't do a regulation targeting specifically short-term rentals. So there was no noise ordinance, they mentioned that typically people get a phone call around 11 o'clock at night. On the lock on a door, it's typically more common in the summer, the knock on the door, issue a warning, they come back, it's a citation for breach of peace or public disturbance. They mentioned it's more common in the summer, and he, they pointed out Ashby Street and Latham Street in particular, for people complaining about the bars being too loud. Getting on a short-term rental problem. I specifically asked the officer about Pearl Street and gravel street, because that's been that hot topic conversation locally. They mentioned those calls are typically people walking home from the car drunk, trying to find their car, on a short-term rental problem, or it's somebody on their Harley that's riding too loud, and I promise it's not me. Is that to remind people, if they live in downtown Mystic and they have to close their window? As far as records, that can be found on the police records website. If you fill out a form, it takes a couple of weeks, but you can actually ask for a specific address, and they'll give you any citation history, but you have to ask for a specific address. You know, we haven't seen any evidence of a specific issue. Like I said, no, we're happy to work with you, there's a problem. But first, how do you, as a zoning board, know that there is an issue? I'm not saying there isn't one, but have you seen any citation, have you seen any photo or video documenting a short-term rental causing it a problem? We haven't, and we want to solve this with you, but we have to start somewhere. You know, people love to complain, they love to hear themselves talk, who knows where this is coming from, but we want to work with you guys and figure this out. Again, not saying it's not an issue, but it's worth considering when you're on the brink of shutting down an entire income source for a lot of people, not just owners, but businesses as well. It's worth considering, is there an issue at all? And if it does exist, you're looking at a group of responsible short-term owners that have the knowledge, the experience, and the know-how, how to operate these properties, these properties properly. Why don't you ask us for help in figuring this out? The last page, section eight, I have a couple of graphs. It's just one piece of graphs that won't fall asleep on me, but I know the previous, one of the arguments against us is that short-term rental, if we're coming in here, we're scooping up properties, we're taking everybody out of this, of this market. That's not the case. You look at the, the last page there, those are headlines nationwide of what, what prices are doing. We've never seen price rules like this ever in a long time. This is nationwide, this is not Mystic specific. I put an offer with a client on a house in Manchester two weeks ago, there were 41 offers in Manchester. This is not Mystic specific, if you look at a second graph on this page, that is the number of homes for sale. You look at March of 2017, there were 117 houses for sale in Mystic. March of 2022, there were 31 houses for sale. That is a massive drop in inventory. This is business economics 101, when you have a massive drop in supply, prices and demand go up. That's what's happening here, I'm a licensed salesperson in this area, I know this market very well. And that's what's happening. And as far as a long-term rental argument, it's, it's really difficult and almost impossible to have, in this market, that has to have a long-term rental that's cash flowing, it's a good investment, has a good return for any local landlord or investor. In other words, in this market, it's not worth it to buy a single-family home in Mystic and rent it out long-term. It's a different market, we have never seen this before, it's a changing market, we have to adapt to these changes and what's going on. And it's clear that tourism and short-term rentals are working in this community. Again, I thank you for your time, I don't mean to come across as rude or callous or offensive, I'm very passionate about this, I take this very seriously. And I hope you consider what I have to say, and I hope you can enjoy some of the handwritten reviews I attached to the back of this pack. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address this?
How do you make, thank you for your time. My name is Glan Hespler, my husband and I own properties on Pequot Avenue 414 and 424. Properties that we renovated and actually increased the surrounding property values in Mystic because the houses were quite dilapidated. My husband and I yesterday walked through Mystic Village, and we went to each of the shops and spoke with the workers and the shopkeepers. We gave them information about Mystic Host Association and what's going on presently with the board in terms of potentially shutting down short-term rentals. The response from the owners, business owners and staff was pretty much across the board. Number one, no one had heard of any issues. They were really quite shocked that there was any concern going on. They were all vehemently against shutting down or regulating any of the SDRs in any way. They each felt it was detrimental to their business, and were very bold in saying this is going to hurt us financially, we can't sustain. Each asked what the complaints were, and I thought that was very telling, in that I could not tell them specifically what the complaints were. Had I been able to say, look, we've had 10 complaints of breach of peace, we've had 15 complaints of breach of a noise ordinance. That would have been very helpful and insightful for them to understand what the issues actually are. But I really was not able to come up and say there have been 17 police citations against SDRs over the last six months. And I think in all fairness and catching on to Tyler's point, I would actually like to see those files, and I would like to sit with you and address what those problems have been specifically, and work together to try to address what the issue is. Because I still have not seen anything, and I think the people, the owners, the business workers are entitled to that information before we make significant changes to an industry that is presently very, still struggling after COVID. You have businesses and restaurants right now just starting to profit as we go into the tourist industry, the season, which we need. No one can deny that Mystic survives on tourism. Every business in Mystic survives on tourists to survive, to financially benefit, and make this the most beautiful community that it is. I grew up here, Mystic was not like that 50 years ago when I was a kid. We made it what it is, it is beautiful and it is an attraction. And how are you going to sustain that? The hotels can't do it, one of the shopkeepers herself said all she hears about is complaints about the quality end. And that her last guest, shop, shoppers that came in said they would never stay there again because it was disgusting. And I, you know, can tell you, none of the SDRs are disgusting. I plan to retire in my house. Presently, it's very difficult to retire in Connecticut, so that is helping sustain our income. I have a lot of pride in the homes that we have, and I don't think you see that in a lot of the hotels around here. We all have a very vested personal interest in these properties, I don't want anybody damaging my property in the inside or outside. I think it's very important, and we all feel very strongly in that. The other piece to this is understanding that times change, Mystic has changed, your community and your demographic has changed. Millennials do not use hotels. When they're traveling, they're going to Airbnb and VRBL. When they communicate, they text, they Twitter, they are a different animal. And we cannot treat them like how we all used to travel, you go to the holiday and that's what you do. They don't do that, and you can see that in the success of these businesses. And I would ask that we work together in making everybody happy, because I think we can do that if we work for the same goal, which is loving our community. Thank you for your time.
I should say. Oh, that's the proper.
It's good.
I think you just need your address.
Could you state what your address is for the record? That's your address or your property? Yeah, but where do you live? Oh, that's your address.
Did you get the, the address later?
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Curran, I live at 6 Ashby Street in Mystic. We live in 1871, my husband Jeff and I live in 1871 Clonan Home, and again, 6 Ashby Street. I wanted to reach out tonight because it's really deja vu for me, hearing some of the things that are being said about you know, tourism being beneficial in community, because I grew up in hometown, the very similar story. I first had the opportunity to come to Groton when I was stationed here in the Navy in 2008. I fell in love with community because I love New England charm, and I knew I, one day I wanted to call this community home. It reminded me finally of where I grew up, which was on Isle of Palms in Charleston, South Carolina. Which was also, I say was, past, past tense, also a Navy town when I grew up there. When I grew up there, it's a very small, small community with many military retirees, school teachers, artists, raising their families, very community-based. Many of my friends and parents and grandparents even grew up together, fought World War II together. Everybody knew everybody. Unfortunately, the naval base combination, the naval base closing in the early 90s, Hurricane Hugo hit in 1989, some of you guys may remember that. Charleston decided to rebrand itself as a, as a tourism destination. I'm sure a lot of you all are very familiar with it now, it's probably, it's number one in all the tourism travel guides now, is the lean place for food, wine. I'm not debating, debating, it really is quite wonderful, beaches are great, influx of tourism every year. Also resulting in a lot of influx of investors, buying of homes, building, the people buying second homes and turning them into short-term rentals. And end up driving the locals further out of town. And a lot of people that supported the community, restaurant workers, other people that worked globally, kept on having to be pushed out further and further. And, and because they can no longer afford to live locally and work in town. Over the span of 15 years, I witnessed my hometown turn into one with monolithic box homes, posting rotating out-of-state cars every week. My, my parents are barely staying on, and they, they still live there. There have actually been businesses that popped up to support the short-term rentals. People don't, they, you know, instead of having rental, bringing their own chairs and bringing them home when they would beach chairs, they actually just leave them on the beach. And so they're actually businesses now that'll pick up the trash that people don't want to take home with them. They're the little businesses that popped up as a result of that, just I'm sure that. Party prices and taxes went up and drove out all the permanent residents. First, as retirees pass away, their homes will be demoed by the next week. And then flattened and built again more monolithic box homes. Next, the middle-income families were forced out because they can no longer afford to live there. Today, very few teachers, firemen, restaurant servers can afford to live in the community and commit, continue to commute upwards of an hour to work each day. Lastly, a vast majority of homes, Isle of Palms, and our second homes are private rentals being managed by Realtor officers or offices or LLCs. Tiny offices also have representation on the town council, which removes barriers to entry and ensuring laws remained in their favor. I share this background with you because I'm fearful of what I'm seeing in this town, particularly the number of short-term rentals. What is this doing to support the community? If I've learned anything during the pandemic, it's how wonderfully supportive our community and neighbors have been for, to support each other. That support has helped us keep our downtown restaurants and businesses open through the hardest times with no tourists were visiting. By allowing, for short-term rentals remain legal and proliferate, we'll be attracting people into our community, buying of homes only to flip or rent them as short-term rentals with no sense of community here. This will make it unaffordable for current residents to remain and drive away families for a place, looking for a set, or a place with a sense of community. Between the strategic subbase, electric boats contracts, manage Backshore submarines, Pfizer's office, Foxwoods, and Mohegan. Mystic and surrounding towns here are built to survive without depending on proliferated short-term rental economy. I implore you to put more to ban of these short-term rentals in the community. I worry if swift action is not taken, we're going to be facing the same fate as my former hometown. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address this?
Hi, my name is John Davis, and I live at 198 Shore Avenue. And I really appreciate you folks making time in your P and Z commission meetings to have a public comment section. We all appreciate it regardless of what side of the fence. We all appreciate it regardless of what side of the fence we're on, the short-term rental issue. I actually kind of want to speak to what's been said. Because I'm struck by the sincerity, which really I appreciate so much. I'd like to just cover this really quickly and then just comment a couple on a couple of things that have been said. This is just a starting, what's its five places? In case. P and Z decides to address this, I hope you do. If you do. These are just some suggestions of, there's so many places to look about. How is this being handled, short-term rentals? And what are some of the ground rules put in place? I will point out that as recently as a week ago, the, the, the Noank Fire District sent out via email. A communication to everybody, just reminding those that live in the fire district. That they are illegal, short-term rentals are illegal, not allowed, period. And that's the second page on this. And then it does talk about Westerly or this, this has Westerly, which again, a beach community, you know, a tourist town, et cetera. And how they've dealt with it and it's, it's pretty interesting, ground rules. Ledger, just in the past month or so, after a two-year trial period, decided. Their regs or their ordinance didn't have enough teeth, so they, they, they tweaked it and made it their only legal if their owner occupied, I believe. Then even Hartford, my point being even big cities can address this and try to get their hands around the issue. Hartford came up with an ordinance, gosh, at least a couple of years ago, and even Newport, Rhode Island. So should you be interested in looking into it, should you need some leads, this is some information and you may very well be aware of this all already. So the thing I want to say is I'm just really struck by the sincerity of. Those of you that do this as a endeavor. And, and I. I think we're real, I think we're getting closer. We're all on the same page and you know. You guys bought that old house in your hair forever probably and you guys have been here forever and so on and so forth. I mean, we really care about this community and. I would sort of, I guess what I'd say is one is I would, I would like to kind of interact with this organization whenever you, and not so much for spy material, but more. Kind of really like, well, let's get down and talk then, you know, and solve it. But um, this is what I want to say is I, I sort of challenge you, but also invite you to make your activity legal. I've yet to have you point out in the zoning regs for the town. How short-term rental businesses and residential zones are legal. It doesn't make you bad or anything, but just show me where they're allowed. I think the answer is they're not allowed.
Can you address?
I am sorry, I am sorry. Yes. So.
Holding a debate.
That's, you're right, you're right. So I'm sorry. So. I would just ask. Let's make it legal. If, if you're meaning you, P and Z Commission, if you. Are so inclined. Right now it is not. Some of us are working sort of the, if you will, mute or get a handle or a lid on the short-term rental. Those of us that are working on that side of the fence, if you will. Are kind of where we're, where we're heading is regs and ordinance to have some ground rules about this. Similarly, I would ask the people, the proponents that you kind of expect and require out of the proponents of this kind of activity. That they. Take as much lead, not all the good stories about, you know, it does this and that, but just. What can they do concretely to make this allowable in the town of Groton? It's not allowed in. In Noank Fire District, the city's kind of avoiding the issue and we're looking to you to perhaps choose to regulate it. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address this?
Good evening. Name is Bruce McDermott, live at three twenty-eight Noank Road. I guess the question I would have for everybody here is, how would you like to live next to a short-term rental? What would you be missing? The first thing you'd be missing is a neighbor. I have a couple of them on Noank Road within a stone's throw of me. A couple died. Somebody bought the house and turned it into a short-term rental. I don't have a neighbor there anymore. Used to enjoy drinks on the patio. They're gone. Nobody has replaced them. The fellow that lives right next to me put his house on the market last year for seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Nothing happened. Bit by bit, other real estate agents got involved. Ended up selling it for a million two. To somebody who was going to use it as a short-term rental. Should that happen, I'm out another neighbor. So that's what happens with these short-term rentals. I have no problem with somebody that owns a house. Wants to rent out a room or a floor. That's perfectly okay. I think that that's as it should be. But we lose housing stock that people could have or neighbors. The preamble to the zoning regulations says. That they want to promote the health and wellbeing. And quality of life in our community. Short-term rentals don't do that. It's purely a profit motive. Make no mistake about it. It's as simple as that. And I don't blame folks for wanting to protect their property. That's another God given right. But. As previously mentioned, you do have some examples with Noank and Ledger. Why did they make those regulations as they did? They want to preserve a quality of life that would not be there. If short-term rentals were allowed to just run amok. We have hundreds of them here now and I'm sure probably most of them are reasonably well-run. I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with taking away neighbors, neighborhoods. And I can see it happening in mine and I do not want it to continue. Mystic isn't what it used to be. We've got Harborview Landing right across from us, across the railroad tracks. Do they make a lot of noise? You bet they make a lot of noise. Ten o'clock is when everything is supposed to cease, but doesn't happen. We have hordes of people trooping by with unfortunately their dogs. And makes a mess out of the lawns, but that's just one particular instance. That I'm familiar with, but I don't want to see us lose neighbors. I don't want to see us lose neighborhoods. People that own their own property. Want to rent out a room or a floor, find an accessory apartment, perfectly okay. You have some good examples and communities right next to us. I think that we need to regulate these things. I agree with John who spoke before me. I've read those regulations over and over. As far as I'm concerned, there is no reason why those things should be allowed. I just don't understand it. It doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address this?
Bought our dream home in Ledger. John Hessler, six Wolfbridge Gap. Ledger, Connecticut. My wife and I, we bought our dream home, Ledger. I reside at the bottom of the cul-de-sac, the common driveway. And. We thought we were going to have a wonderful. Family life there, which we did. We started out rough. Were teenagers, were adults, coming in late at night with music playing, vibrating our windows at two in the morning. These are neighbors. Permanent neighbors. You can't choose your neighbor. They would speed up and down the common driveway and I contacted the police officers, police office. And said, there's nothing they can do because of the private driveway. Until what? Until something happens to the kids. So I had to put in speed bumps, slow the traffic down, make it enjoyable for my kids, play safely. So you can't choose your neighbors. We would have loved to have a family move in with three young children, but it never happened. We were thinking about seriously moving from Ledger to Mystic. We just, we just kept our nose to the grindstone and, and things worked out. We had shootings, stabbings. And this is in Ledger. And. And it was very frustrating. I, I just, so you can't choose your neighbors and I wish I was more prepared with this. I should have been, but that's all I have to say is.
Yes. All right. My name is Paul Bead. I live at Sevenborough Street and I also have a house on two seventy-five Nyack Road. To the members of planning and zoning, to my neighbors, right, to other members of the community. We all have one thing in common. We all love Mystic. That's why we're here, right? We work here, we play here, we eat and sleep here and we all care about what happens here. First thing I would like to say is about the definition of terms. Short-term rentals are not hotels. They're not motels. I've heard them called worse than motels, right? They're not boutique hotels. They are unique. They're different, right? They're new, right? Very similar to when condominiums were first introduced into our area. They were not houses. They were not apartments. They were, they were new. But now they're part of the community and they're accepted in our way of life. Next, I would like to explain the difference in between a short-term, a midterm and a long-term rental. From a neighbor's perspective and also from a host's perspective, because I, I have, I, I'm a neighbor to them and I also have hosted them. Right? Short-term renters are usually there for just a few days or perhaps a couple of weeks tops. These properties are maintaining close to perfect condition. Everything is set up in a very particular way. These properties are inspected at every turnover to make sure that they remain in as good a condition as possible. It usually takes a couple of hours to clean, set up, remove trash, water plants, weed, et cetera. And if anything is out of place. We know it, right? Our neighbors, our neighbors will remark at how well the properties are maintained, right? We have a good relationship with our neighbors, right? They know that we're going to be there, right? They see what we do. They see what we've done to the, to, to, to the, our short-term rental property. Right? The longer the, actually, let me get to midterm, midterm renters from an owner's perspective are the most difficult. Right? We want to keep them pristine, but it's difficult and frustrating because the lack of access makes that impossible, right? And the longer the renter is living in a property, the more absent the owner becomes. Landlord usually only gets notified when something catastrophic happens. The renters can be both good or bad, but they can be there for years, right? And when they leave, the process of restoring that space can take weeks or months and is usually quite expensive. Last thing I would say about renting for more than thirty days is that Connecticut has a set of tenant laws that are very heavily biased towards the tenant. It makes it a painful process to evict someone for non-payment. It could take years, right? And then more than anything else has affected my decision to do short-term renter rentals rather than longer term. But finally, I hear a lot of stuff about corporations and buying up houses and stuff like that, but this is who we are, right? We're your neighbors. That's why we're here, right? We live on gravel street, on Pearl Street, on High Street. I live on Borough Street, right? We're not a corporation. Some of us do this full-time like my lovely wife. Some of us do this part-time like me. Some of us are retired and do the short-term rentals to pay the bills and pay our taxes. But in conclusion, I would just like to say that we, the members of this community and your neighbors have already earned your trust, right? We have earned your trust as your neighbors, as your business associates and as your healthcare provider, me personally. I know that living here for thirty years and having and treating patients here for thirty years. I know that I would not do anything to tarnish my reputation as that healthcare provider, as that neighbor or as a host of a short-term rental. Thank you guys for your time and for your open minds.
Hi, my name is Tim Marchand from five Ashby Street. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I've been kind of following this right before the pandemic. My wife and I bought a house here in Mystic and it was like our dream house. I'm their generation from the area. And we were blessed with two kids, two twins that I have. Now I walk them every day. And I'm worried about what short-term rentals are going to do to the community in the long term, the next five years and the next ten years. Right now I walk my kids down the street and I stop and talk to each neighbor that are there full-time. And next door to me, I have a STR, which houses sixteen people each weekend during the summer months. I work on the weekends. That means my wife and two children are home alone. With strangers next door having a good time. We're all for a good time. Live on Ashby Street. We hear the bars. I'm fine with that. There are business owners and employees on the premises of those bars and in hotels, but the short-term rentals where the landlords aren't there. I wonder who's responsible and I'm just worried in the long term, what is the community from Mystic is going to look like for my children and if it's something that we want to be a part of.
Anyone else wants to speak to us? Oh. Because we're a long ways away from even starting to do anything.
All right, so I'm going to put some of the folks who are participating.
Only two of them have their hands raised.
Hello, yes, can you see me? Let me see if I can get my camera on. I don't know if you want to see me or not, but first of all, planning and zoning, I just want to thank you for the time and energy because I know you mostly volunteer. I'm sorry, Kristen is not to eighty-two Irving Street in Mystic. And I'm a retired school teacher and we moved up here and found a house with an adjacent apartment. Thinking that perhaps one of our elderly parents might move in here with us one day and that we would also use it as a short-term rental. To help kind of pay our taxes and make ends meet. And the fact of the matter is my family is far-flung. I have a daughter who lives in Paris, France, a daughter in Minneapolis. My father's in Wisconsin. My brother's in Chicago. My nephews are in Boston. My mother-in-law's in New York. My best friend's in Berkeley, California. So when people come to see me, they're not just coming for dinner and going home. They stay. And the fact of the matter is my house is kind of small. So I had the opportunity to, in addition to running, kind of using my apartment as an Airbnb to help me make ends meet. To also purchase a house a few doors down when it came on the market that had been a rental. With college kids and very rundown to also use as an Airbnb. And we've been really successful. I would say that our neighbors, we've had zero complaints. We take a lot of care. We really, really improve these properties. I'm watching like a hawk every minute. And I just want to share with you the kinds of people that choose my Airbnb over a hotel. First of all, I charge way less than a hotel. I'm netting less than a hundred dollars a night, so. A lot of people, including my own family, can't afford three hundred fifty dollars a night for a hotel in Mystic. So who comes to stay with me? I have coasties who have a weekend leave and they want to nest with their significant other. I have Navy personnel who might do a month in training or they're either embarking or disembarking from a submarine. And their spouses, and they just want to have a last night together. I have parrots coming for either Coast Guard or Con College graduation. I have young couples who are scouting a wedding location. Some people are moving to or from the area and they need a week of transition while they're busy moving boxes and getting themselves changed over. People closing up their office. I have a gentleman here with me now who comes three days a week, Monday through Wednesday, because. He, he owns a business in Groton, but he lives up in Massachusetts somewhere and he just is tired of staying in hotels, so he comes. Just to have a nice homey place to stay three nights a week, like every week. I have a mom, had a mom whose college aged child was having health difficulties. And so mom came to stay for three weeks so she could cook and give emotional support to her daughter. I had a writer come who needed a quiet place to finish his book. He stayed a couple of weeks. I have couples who are celebrating birthdays or anniversaries. A lot of young people, people in their early twenties who can't afford a hotel, but they want to see, they want to experience Mystic and I, I warrant they'll be back later with their children. I have people who prefer homes to hotels. I myself, when I travel, much prefer. A homey environment so I can visit with my family and friends rather than a hotel. And then I have a lot of people who grew up here and they're coming back and there's a family reunion or a, a family vacation to get together or a funeral. So over the, over the. So over the, over the course of time I've done this, I've paid occupancy taxes to state of Connecticut. I pay income taxes. On the revenue that I earn, I've greatly improved my properties. I've employed, employed all kinds of, you know, electricians, carpenters, AC guys, all kinds of people. I'm really providing, I think, a valuable service to the community and I'm referring people downtown to restaurants constantly. My guests are quiet. They're respectful of the neighborhood. There's never been a complaint. I also employ a woman in her seventies who cleans the spaces. Who I pay her easily twice or three times what she could make in a hotel. She's not, um, she's, she was a waitress, but they've not given her any shifts anymore because of her age. So I employ her. I'm also employing a gardener. So, so I just feel like I really do provide a very good service to the community. And then furthermore, you know, I'm not Conrad Hilton. I'm not a Marriott. I can't afford a Spicer Mansion. I can't afford a hotel, hotel downtown. You know, like the, the Whalers Inn. I'm just a small business person with a business in my house. Now, people, there's been some saying, well, it's not really necessarily legal, but you have to understand that many people have home businesses. Their accountants, their lawyers, artists, tutors, therapists, music teachers, their tech workers. There's a multitude of people, hair cutters, who have business in their homes. So because my skillset happens to be providing a very homey, comfortable, nice environment for people to visit. I don't feel I should be discriminated against because my skillset is not accounting or being an attorney or an engineer. I really do care very much about Mystic. I love it here. I am super careful to, to make sure that everything's fine. And I think there should be a distinction between those of us here in the room who are local residents who, who really care. Uh, and there's a difference between us and corporations who might be snapping up rentals and maybe that's something we need to look at. Uh, but basically I think contribute, uh, manage properly, the short-term rentals are very positive contribution to the community. I think if you ban them outright, I would probably have to sell my, my property. I don't know how I would host my family because especially as grandchildren and, you know, significant others are in the picture. Um, I don't have a giant big house. Um, my family unfortunately can't afford to stay in a hotel. Uh, but I hope we can really work together and work something out that really works for everybody, for the permanent residents, which I am. And, um, people who do own short-term rentals and people who don't, and I really appreciate our planning and zoning, paying attention to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Jennifer, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yes, so I'll, I'll be brief and because I've been here before. But I would say. Oh, Genevieve Surf, six Pearl Street Mystic. And I have been here before speaking on the subject of the short-term rentals. And I'm, I really feel for all the people who are, came up here and spoke about the fact that they're. You know, in their owner-occupied short-term rentals. And I think that's really one of the keys that you might consider. When you do your regulations, clearly these people who are running owner-occupied short-term rentals. Are doing it very well. I totally believe them. And I, I have no problem with that. In fact, you know, I had a friend who did one. My problem with really is with the, the ones that are doing it, running it more like a business. The ones that are not, you know, where their short-term rentals are not owner-occupied. I think that is really the way you, where the line has to be drawn. Because what's happening is the entire neighborhood is not a neighborhood anymore, as Bruce pointed out. You know, we don't have neighbors anymore. I don't have a neighbor because I have the, I have the bar on one side of my house. And I have a short-term rental on the other side of my house and I have one behind me and there's one. There's a, there's a, then there's an owner, there's another short-term rental. And I'm appalled by what's happening to the neighborhood. Furthermore, I'm on the RTM now, starting to do the budget. And when, um, when town manager Bert first presented us to us the result, he said, we were going to have a seven and a half percent increase in the taxes this year. Which they've reduced to almost nothing. In fact, I think it's about the same mill rate as last year. By using the fund balance and by cutting the budget like crazy. Reason for that is that the property values have gone up by about thirty percent in residential areas and I've lived through this before. And, um, remember Sue Sutherland probably remembers that I worked with her husband, John, to effectively try to bring in a thing called a phase in. Because these thirty percent increases in residential values were not equaled by increases in commercial industrial spaces, which only were increased. Only increased in this revell about fifteen percent. So places like Pfizer and Electric Boat and probably are going to get, I haven't done the math yet, but we had done the math. At the last, last time around, they were going to get huge millions of dollars of tax cuts. Because of the inequality in the property revelves. And I am persuaded, again, I haven't done the math because all this is happening so fast. I'm persuaded that the reason the real estate prices in residential areas have gone up so much, especially in Mystic. Is because people are buying these houses as investments for short-term rentals. And some people have, I mean, I know that some people who spoke here have at least two houses. So, you know, I would really like, and then there's no room for ordinary people to live. There's no room for the people who are working in all these restaurants to work. That's why they're having so much trouble getting personnel. The hotels are failing because they can't, they have nobody to, to, to work for them either because nobody can afford to live here anymore. So these are things that you've all heard before. But I really think that you ought to impose a moratorium on any new short-term rentals until you can sort this out. Because the town is getting bought up as if there was no tomorrow. And, and several towns in the, in, in the area, New England, a province town for one, Newport for another. They are absolutely dying under the burden of these short-term rentals and what they're doing to their residential neighborhoods. So until you can sort out how to limit the, you know, the damages to our neighborhood, the damages to our properties and our property taxes. All you who are in owner-occupied houses. But your house value has gone up like crazy now because of this and you're going to be paying higher taxes, a vicious cycle. You know, the more you pay taxes, then maybe you have to buy another house to do some more short-term rentals. It's absolutely distorting the nature of life. In our community, which should be much more diverse than just short-term rentals and restaurants. The other thing I'd like to suggest to the commission is that you should hire your own attorney. Who hopefully might have some experience with, uh, short-term rentals to get advice. On something that I've heard that, um, from both the planning department and the, um, and the town manager, which is, and the town attorney. Which is any legislation that you might try to pass wouldn't be retroactive. I don't believe this for a second. And I know there's some, that there's some technical stuff having to do with non-conforming properties. I'm not quite sure I understand it, so I'm not going to start talking about it. But I know that every city in the world, and I'm abroad still right now. Every city in the world that has the least amount of tourism has, has put in really, really strong regulations. On short-term rentals because their whole cities are being completely, you know, destroyed in terms of having, you know. Being really places where people can live and having neighborhoods. So you people that are running them, you have to be sympathetic to the fact that those of us who are living here want to be in a neighborhood. We don't want to be surrounded by short-term rentals and people, different people there every weekend. So there's got to be hopefully a moratorium on new ones before the summer because otherwise. You know, whatever thirty houses are left for sale are going to be snapped up. They're being snapped up like crazy as it is. And we really need to sort this out so that things don't get worse. I'm, I'm also somewhat persuaded that what happened with the historic district commission and the house on gravel street. That is now slated for demolition is a result of this. I, I bet dollars to donuts that the new owner will turn that into a short-term rental. So the whole historic district thing is out the window. If the planning commission, you guys, in which I have a tremendous amount of hope and faith. Don't do something and you have to do something quickly. We just cannot let it linger anymore. So a moratorium would be great and a new attorney to get a second, a second opinion. By the way, our town attorney owns, I'm told, this is, this is complete rumor. I'm told that our town attorney has a number of short-term rental properties. And that should be ascertained because if that in fact is the case, then he should recuse himself from, like, giving any kind of recommendations on short-term rentals. Thank you very much.
That's it. Okay, so we can move on with our business then. Next item is the subdivisions. We have Brown subdivision Campbell Road bond release, which is in our agenda.
It's in your packet, it's a two lot subdivision that was approved in two thousand and four. Public improvements have been completed and also in your packet is a, an email from Gray Cannon over at Director of Public Works recommending the release of this bond.
Does anyone have any concern with? Proving. I'll make a motion then to release the thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-dollar public improvement bond for the. Brown subdivision. And second. Any discussion on the motion? During that, we'll vote on the motion to release the bond. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next item, we have the little business applications, data center, moratorium text amendment.
So the application has been submitted and is, the date of receipt is tonight. So we have scheduled a public hearing on the matter, the first meeting in June, so we can make all the required referrals.
Devin, when that says townwide, does that exclude the city?
Yes, your certain regulations only apply to the town, not knowing.
Townwide, I think. But it's only for our. For us. Yeah, all zones. That's what the wide is for zones. You said, Devin, what is the referrals? How wide is that?
So there are a number of required referrals by state statute to neighboring communities, to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, to the Department of Health. We do a number of courtesy referrals to other commissions in town. And also the, the council of governments, some of those referrals are required to be thirty-five, at least thirty-five days prior to the hearing.
Thank you. All the items from business. Commission reports. Report of chair, only thing I have is, uh, it's signed the, the drawings for the Chelsea Branton Bank. Building headquarters upgrade. Forty-eight sheets worth. Well, you're going to sign two sets, so it's twenty-four. A lot of stamping, a lot of signing. And, uh, in response to. Alson's request, does somebody want to serve? With, or work with the conservation commission?
I kind of know the four ninety program and the ten mil, which you didn't mention. I think we saw one.
So you have your.
You're sorry, are you okay with this? I should.
Very good. But this, but maybe this, I mean, for somebody having to come to address this as public communications. Shouldn't we start looking at whether we should get back this committee, uh, chairman, the committee of chairpersons?
We can, we can talk about an agenda for that if you like. Sure, sure. We typically have things that are.
To adjust an information session, but. But that's the type of thing that maybe. The individual commissions could address it or say we're working on this and we need help.
Probably in June, I'm thinking, the earliest once the council is done with.
Oh, we want, I'm not saying it has to be done right now. I just think we ought to. Maybe we should.
When you have those, or when you had those meetings, was there, um, who would go?
Well, it's, oh, you mean, which, it's land use commissions and they were originally set up by, believe, by the town council. So that to keep the council informed and they always used to have a representative, but in the last. Two years that they held meetings, we did not have council representation. And it turned out to be more informational session.
That would probably be helpful in a lot of ways.
I think we should get the, try to get the council. Yeah, and people can go and attend, but, you know, participate.
Well, and if there's no decisions made, then there's no. Yeah, no one's attending, right?
No, no decisions made for signatures or information, everybody.
Well, should, how do we initiate that again?
No, no.
Staff can.
Staff, staff. Well. No, Mike, Mike Murphy always used to. I don't know if John would like that though. Okay, that's all I had. Does anyone on the commission have anything to report on? I see, they have your flight report updated, but.
Well, I'm getting to that.
Can we talk about that for a second now?
Yes, well.
Well, I thought we'd wait until.
Oh, okay. I think, but having, is the staff have any? Anything to report on?
Sure, I just want to note that we have signed the contract with Coorsley Witten to work on short-term rental data centers and cannabis regulations. We're going to have a conversation with them this week or early next to kind of lay out a schedule. I hope we'll have them before you, just to do preliminary discussions on these items in May.
So the data.
Data centers. Cannabis and short-term rentals. And then at the staff level, we're working on parking regulations and accessory to all units. A lot of, a lot of text minutes.
And I've got a few little minor housekeeping things that I would like to sort of address. I'll just drop you an email and see what you think. I mean, little things in the rent. Yeah, just little, little things, you know.
That I see. List, so.
Well, it seems like if we could maybe just like address everything at once, you know, or whatever. I mean, if they're just minor things. Deb, this, um, by hiring Coorsley Witten. Does, does any members of commission sometimes interpace with them directly or have a member of the commission such as planning and zoning or data centers? We sit with them as far as the planning is concerned or that must have been this type of forum.
Can we have workshop or? Well, we can have workshops.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think, what are you talking about?
I was just looking for the forum, correct?
Is that what you, for the first time to do it as a workshop?
I think it would be good to do these workshops. That's all we have to discuss. Is that one, one item? And just talk, you know.
So in the end, it's being a special meeting. We do have a number of site plans that are coming ready for your review. So it may be special meetings that we're talking.
Well, I think that would be special. It would be special meetings. It would be special meetings.
I know when events are available.
Probably just do, just do one of them. I wouldn't.
Um, I, I think they want to briefly touch on all of them at the very beginning to get a sense of where you're going on it and then, and then do them discreetly. Yeah.
Well, we could do that in a regular. Go along. Do you think, do you think this would be?
It, it does go long. I, I mean, when you have a workshop, you typically do not have any other business.
No, that's what I like to have the work.
Plans, no public communication. It is just a, a, that public can attend, of course. But just a meeting to discuss with you these items. It's probably the best way to start.
Yes. That way you can just concentrate on.
Exactly.
Same, same folks on.
Yes.
The consults.
Yes, same people. Definitely, yes.
All right, now we have the blank update report.
Okay. I did want to note as, as I'm dead on Sandy Hollow Road, there are license plates on a lot of vehicles. I don't know if they're actually registered or not, but there are license plates on the front of the cars that can be seen from the road. I don't know if all of them have a 100 Edgecombe Street, which he did not make any notes on. I don't see any change there and I I would like to see something. I mean, that is a nice residential neighborhood and that and the house next to it, which I believe has the same owner. It's a shame to see all of those unregistered cars in the yards. And I had mentioned a property on Judson Avenue, which I don't see on the list. I can't remember the, the address. But again, that's something that the neighborhood shouldn't have to be looking at. It's at the very end of Judson, I think. Other than that, I am glad to see progress.
And that's my feedback as well, Devin. So I'm very used to seeing dashboards and I'm not talking about the quality, what's in there. The dashboard itself is just terrific, I thought, so good job. Yeah.
Okay, and we have the application updates. It looks like we are in trouble. And the ASP report. So no issues with that. Does anyone have anything else?
I just wanted to go back. I don't know. Do it. I just had one other little thing that I wanted to talk about isn't that we the last meeting, we got the notice from the zoning official about a written request for the zoning change that, or zoning interpretation that he made. And I just, my, I guess my concern is that we have two weeks after a decision like, and that was fine with what he sent or wrote to make, to have an objection to that. And there are times in the summer where we go the whole month or in in Christmas or, you know, where we don't need, or you simply don't, you know, sometimes two weeks might not be enough time to even like understand what it was. And I would like to see if there are written decisions made for them to be sent by email to us directly. Me, like as soon as they are made. Or if there's an instance where we might want to weigh in on something that, I don't know if we have that opportunity ever, but I'm just like to keep that communication, you know, that kind of a level of communication so that we, we aren't having to go to appeal things that it might be something minor. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
It doesn't make very many written.
No, I guess.
It does not.
Yeah.
It does not. As a matter of fact, Sue had asked for past written interpretations. That's basically back to 2019, many regulations were put into effect. And we're gathering that together. We should have that for you guys if you're interested.
Yeah, I think there's the.
There's maybe six or seven of them. So, sure.
You ask question, why is a written decision made at times versus it's a normal verbal?
Um, a lot of times things are verbal, but the written decision is the official interpretation that can be appealed. And so if you're going to make a financial decision based on his, you want it in writing.
Not for chickens, but for. Is that right?
Why, you exceeded the number of chickens.
Chickens, chickens, it's, it's verbal. That was my last thing about chicken coops and restaurants.
If no one has anything else, I'll entertain a motion for a German. So second. Second.